Here.
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 I'd like to entertain a motion for the approval of the agenda.
I so move.
All second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, thank you. We're gonna move on to presentations right away. Just checking. Okay, we have no student, staff, or community recognitions, so we'll be moving on to the referendum facilities committee recommendations.
The referendum facilities committee met four times and sends forward a list of needs and alternatives for each building for your consideration. And before we get too deep into this, I'd like to take a minute to ask the members of the referendum facilities committee that are here this evening to please stand and be recognized. Thank you. I'm working off of this single-page sheet that board members you have in front of you right now, and you may want to pull that out for reference. The priorities for consideration for the projects were, number one, improve functioning of existing Spooner area school district structures, and, number two, to upgrade the security posture of the buildings in the districts. And as a way to categorize this, and Luke Schultz from CISA 10 will get into much greater detail on this, but, you know, what comes before you are some projects that have been identified as needs and then alternates for your consideration. Before I go any deeper into that, I would like to say that a revised tax impact sheet, worked up by Lisa Voison from RW Baird, who was with us back in February, is included in your board docs, and we won't be addressing that tonight because of the volume information that we have to go through, but it's there for your information, and just know that it's calculated at a lower interest rate than Lisa had used back in her February presentation, as interest rates have gone down on those types of issues. So the intent tonight is pretty straightforward. It is to share concepts with you and nothing more than that. You are going to have a lot of information come at you in the next few minutes, and again, we just want to share information, concepts about projects and about financials. You won't be asked to make any decisions tonight, and this will be a conversation that'll be on your agenda in two weeks, and in all likelihood, every meeting going forward for a number of months. So I ask that you just take this in, ask questions about concepts if you need clarification, and take the time that we have between these two meetings to really dig into some of the I want to mention some parallel processes that are taking place to this, right, as well. Luke Schultz is gonna talk more about identification of an architecture and engineering firm, and in two weeks, you'll be asked to take formal action and bring that team onboard. And in addition to that, we are working with the school perceptions company. They have begun work on the development of the comprehensive community survey, and that will come to you for approval at your September meeting. So just know that those are going on. So, back to this document. As we talked about, our priorities were to take a look at improving the functioning of the existing structures in the district and to upgrade the security posture. As you take a look at that chart in the middle, when we looked at the elementary school, and the process for the referendum facilities committee was to do a walkthrough and review projects and have conversations around that, and the committee did a good job that did it for each of the buildings. The elementary school, there were needs identified that totaled $5.8 million, and another 2.9 of additional projects that are alternates for your consideration. And as we get to talk more about the school perception survey, that will be the place in all likelihood that you'll seek to get input from the community about those projects, both the needs and the alternates. But as you read this chart, you kind of read it from left to right. So for the elementary school, you would take the $5.8 million and add on $2.9 million to that figure if all the projects, the needed ones, and the alternatives were done. Middle school, about $8 million of identified needs, and that conversation took on some different directions. Within that conversation about doing upgrades to the existing middle school building, and we know there are some specific needs, like the small gym is gonna have to be raised. There were people on the committee that brought forward the insight that perhaps it's not worth investing the money into the middle school, and that it may be time to consider a middle school addition onto this existing high school building. And so that's why you see really a wide range of costs there. So $8 million would be the projects, the need projects in the existing middle school, and the alternatives would include a variety of things, to include not doing anything with the existing middle school building and building an addition onto the east end of this high school building. High school, about $1 million worth of identified needs and some alternatives in that list, and along with that, again, another alternative for consideration would be to put artificial turf on the field. That is a field that gets used not just for football, but for instructional purposes across the grade spectrums here, so kind of a range of costs. So, in summary, what you see are identified needs, projects totaling approximately $4.8 million. And then when you look at the alternatives, that price tag could have some significant changes, and kind of ranging on the low end would bring the referendum issue to just short of $30 million to as high as over $37 million. So that is a very quick one over the world on the referendum projects as they come forward. Now I'm gonna turn the microphone over to Luke Schultz from CISA 10.
Thank you, Dr. Asland. Okay, first, I will go through the document here that I'm looking at. Mr. Asland brought it up, but I'm gonna go to the A&amp;E bid tab. One thing I will ask when I am done presenting, if you don't mind, I would like to walk through and pick these back up, as you guys are not approving them tonight, you're approving them in two weeks, and just for protection of the school district, it's just good that these numbers stay with us for right now until approval. With that, we reached out to four architectural engineering firms. When we reached out to, we were looking at full design. There's going to be several different aspects with this scope, where you're gonna need a structural engineer, mechanical engineer, electrical engineer, and obviously, we're gonna need an architect. So we looked for the full design with those four companies, SDS Architects out of Eau Claire, River Valley Architects out of Eau Claire, Ayers out of Eau Claire, and Wold Architects and Engineers are out of Minnesota. When we put these RFPs together, we like to ask what the fees would be upfront if the referendum were to pass, and what the fee would be if the referendum were to fail. So you can see those two columns on the first side, and then what we did is, at this point, it's very preliminary, we don't know what that scope or that dollar amount is going to be, so we give a range. I will go through the scope after this, but I got a good feeling that at least the A&amp;E will be involved with $5 million. So I like to look at that $10 million kind of plus is probably where you're gonna be at when you look at the fees. So when you look at this, I think the big things that stand out to me would be if the referendum were to fail. If you look at two of those architectural firms, that's a very large dollar amount. The other thing to point out, we're just working down the road, and we bid this out last year, and 7.5% was the low bid. So when you look at this in perspective of what your fees are here, these are really good numbers with what came back. I would recommend, the numbers are pretty straightforward, all four of these companies are great companies, we've worked with all of them, do good work. My recommendation would be the top one. There was phone calls with a couple, just with questions that I had with pricing. For example, River Valley Architects had a range. The reason why they had a range is the lower fee would have just been architectural, so the higher end would have been full design. So there was questions like that that I went through, but there was no formal interview process or anything like that, but with how these numbers come back, to me, it's pretty straightforward, where a lot of the times, you're doing an interview, a big part of this process is communication and relationships. So when I look at that and with these numbers, they're not that close to me to do that, but that's totally up to you guys. I would recommend moving forward with the top company in two weeks at your next board meeting. Is there any questions?
Did the middle two companies give you any indication as to why those two numbers were so high?
No, a lot of it comes down to, they might already be busy, so if we're going to do that, numerous things they look into is sometimes your stats of past referendums. So there's a lot of time and commitment that goes into planning a referendum, so that might have been a part of it as well.
Okay.
But no, I didn't go into detail of why they were gonna charge that.
Okay. Thank you.
You bet. But any other questions referring to the price? And if you guys, the one thing I would look for tonight, because if you're looking in two weeks to approve this, if there was more information or details that you would need, please let us know tonight, as we can dig in the next couple of weeks.
I'm sorry, I came in late.
No problem.
Maybe I didn't miss anything, but if, moving across the line on SDS, if the referendum fee, as I understand it, is $20 million, they take 4%, is that correct?
That is correct, sir. And that is construction cost. One thing I want to point out to you guys, which is a good point, we bring the architect and the engineer in when needed. So for example, resurfacing blacktop, sealing that and crack sealing it, or doing a roof, there's no architect or engineer needed. So for example, you could pass a referendum for $18 million, the architect and engineer might be only working $9 million of it. That makes sense?
Mm-hmm.
That saves the district lots of...
Have we met, if we were to decide to go through this, have we met our obligation? Do we have to post something like this, or we just let you pick out and send it out?
Well, you did, it was a formal RFP process. We did a walkthrough of the four firms.
Right.
Showed them each of the buildings, then that would be, you guys have the RFPs, and then your next board meeting, it would be essentially an action item of your board.
So we're okay with that?
Yes, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Yep. At last month's committee of the whole, you approved as a consensus item for CISA 10, who we've contracted with, to let that RFP on our behalf.
Yep.
So your recommendation with SDS, is that not only because it's financially competitive, I see, but how many, have you worked with them? Are they compared to the others, do you just like them, forget about the fees for a minute?
All four of these firms I would recommend to the district with working with. That's why when we do a request for proposal, we're sending that to companies that we would work with and that we recommend. We're not gonna send an RFP to somebody that we wouldn't work with.
Well, maybe you don't know them, though, I mean...
Right, yep. To be completely honest with you, River Valley Architects is the only one on here that we haven't worked with, in good detail. Currently, planning phases, done projects with SDS, Ayers, and Wold.
But you're very satisfied with the way SDS operates?
Yeah.
Is there an example of what project they did recently somewhere?
Boy, they're currently working with, I know on Frederick right now, they're currently working with us on Elk Mound, trying to think of a last one that they just did, Elko School District, I believe they did. They're a well-known company, they've done a lot of projects, and they do several projects that they're now working with us as well.
Okay, thanks.
Yep. Any other questions with the bid tab? Great. So now for the fun part, and I'll come back when I'm done here, but again, just to touch on Mr. Asland and what he was going through, again, this is, my goal tonight is to give you guys the details of the three buildings, what we've looked at, so you guys understand the scope. That's the goal of tonight. We don't need to go into the weeds of where a sidewalk is gonna be, or where are we gonna hang a parking lot light, it's more of you understanding what the scope is, because there's gonna be a lot of information, and there's plenty of time for us to get in the weeds later. My goal is, so I left you documentation and printouts, so you can take this home and take your own notes and prepare, so then when we come back to future meetings, you guys already have your thoughts collected and written down. So with that said, I'll go right to the long-term planning document, which is this report. And by any chance, is this electronic, so I could share it with the group, Hugh, is that on here?
Yeah, stand corrected, it is on board docs, yeah. Mr. Miller can help you out with that.
I sent it to Caitlin. As we're loading this up, you'll see the first couple pages, which I'm not gonna go into great detail with this, but this is to give you an idea, this document, moving forward, is a moving document. So this is gonna change quite a bit by the time we get to the fall, end of fall. The point of this document, it's easy for the district and the community and administration to move along, and this keeps getting updated as we keep making changes. When it gets past the survey, end of October, this is a document when we do community meetings to get the community up to speed with what we're looking at. These will be printed out by CISA 10 bound copies, so it's a very transparent document, which the community can come in, grab one, and then they can bring it home with them too. So it's transparency 100%, but again, moving document. We're good?
Is that what you want?
It's perfect, thank you, Hugh. So I'll go through some of this pretty quickly in the front, it's just to get an update, so how we started, executive summary. We get into the facility audit, what does CISA 10 look at when we go through this audit Staff surveys, there is a staff survey that was sent out to all the members and collected that feedback, and put a report together for the school board. Strategic plan, how did we get here, how, why are we here tonight? And it started from, starting with that facility study, to the strategic plan, so that goes through a little bit of that process. Now we get into the bones of it, where we met with the facilities committee, which started off with a long list, and we completed a walkthrough of each building. And that list was essentially, we're gonna show you each of the measures with each of the buildings, and then what we want to narrow this down to is what you feel is priority needs, and then what are needs that the school board should discuss further in detail. So when we look at this first part with the elementary school, these are priority, as they feel these are needs that need to be done and included with the referendum. So part of that is exterior doors. Some of these doors are 30-plus years old, some of them don't shut properly, rusted pretty bad, but the exterior doors, there was two sets that have been replaced, but we'd recommend replacing all the doors. Network wiring, 20-plus years old, running throughout the building, that should be looked at, along with wireless access points. There are some areas in the building which it definitely needs to be updated, especially if you're looking at anything with new construction, that wiring should really be looked at and updated. Wheelchair accessible door openers, you'll see that that is to be determined, the reason why I put that is to be determined, if you happen to move the office, that would be included with that package, which I will go through that package in a little bit further down. Air conditioning or dehumidification, they call it in Minnesota, but the district should look at adding this to the elementary school, mostly environmental concerns, where you got that burn that goes all the way around the building, but the district has had some issues with mold in those classrooms, but just looking at flooring and other environmental issues, it'd be a good idea to look at some dehumidification with the elementary school. There is a condensing roof unit that is, anytime could go, it's definitely on its last leg, that should be looked at. Your fire alarm system, currently, right now, your fire alarm system is obsolete for the components. If you walk into your elementary school, there, in the office, there's a panel right on the right-hand side, that is, that's not even working right now. So if there was an emergency and fire would show up, that is to show you where the location of the fire or the concern is, and that is currently not working. So we would look at updating the fire alarm system. Playground, there's several old pieces of equipment, there is some newer equipment, but we would look at updating the equipment. During my walkthrough, there was some equipment that even had holes in the slide, some bolts. It's definitely time the equipment needs to be looked at. It's not included in the cost right now, but there is also a drainage issue, where you'll see that silt black fence in the corner, it's just the way it sloped, all that sand, with the environment that we live in, most of that sands ends up in the corner of that playground. So depending on dollars and budget, we look at some alternative options there to help fix that. The bleachers in the gym, those are 30 years plus, definitely looking to update those and also look at ADA compliant with those. American Disability Act is what that stands for as well. Parking, both lots, there's a front and a back lot, both of those lots should be sealed and crack-filled. There's some good potholes in the backside. One thing, when you look at that dollar amount, if they do happen to move the office to the back, there's an enter and kind of an exit there, we would look at widening those out just for safety concerns and easier paths, so that's included in that cost. The gym floor, to the knowledge, has never been resurfaced, so that is definitely a need and replacement. There's some spots, too, where the wood is completely wore out and need a replacement. Windows throughout the entire facility, we would look at updating, more efficient windows. There's some windows, too, that we would look at maybe reconfiguring different levels. For example, the windows in the front of the elementary school, the snow piles were halfway to three-quarters of the way up in the windows. So maybe the window is moved up a little bit higher and blocked, so then that way, too, we're not dealing with environmental or moisture issues as well in the future. Exterior lighting, much of this could be completed in the energy exemption projects, the district has done a great job taking advantage of that. Right now, with contingency dollars that would be remaining after this summer's projects, the exterior lighting at the elementary school could be completed after this summer. So that's one of those line items that's to be determined, that dollar amount will definitely come down, it's just how much can be completed, and we will know that in a month and a half. So, looking at that, it's the, next page, I guess. The electronic sign, you can see the sign that's originally out there, the, looking at the electronic sign, that should be actually deleted out of there, because it's gonna be down in the alternates, and I think that's why I'm getting confused. Yes. So that was put into the alternates with the committee. So going to the yellow part, this is something that can fluctuate depending on the different options that you pick. So I'll go to, if you pull out your sheet, here, I'll scroll down so the crowd can see it. But right now, your elementary school office, you get buzzed in, and then those visitors and guests can pretty much, there's two hallways, as you can see there, they can get right into the building, and there's nothing from stopping them. So one thing to look at, which is very popular with most schools now, especially with referendums or with other dollars available, is looking to do a secure vestibule with their office. So one thing that was brought up, there's a lot of moving parts here, but there's kind of three options with this. If you look at the kind of orange, tannish color, I guess you could say, that would be moving the office, which you now see is a new classroom, that would be moved back to closer to where the playground is, there's a green space there, that's where we would locate the new secure office, which would switch your parking. So buses are in the back right now, buses would move to the front, and then parent pickup drop-off would be in the back, and that's where your staff would park. So it's kind of helping two different safety issues there, transportation is a safety issue, and then also the secure office, so it's kind of tackling both of those in the same scope. While they're doing that, right now, cafeteria is served on half of the side of lunch on the gym, so they put a divider down, fayette is going on on the other side. We would look at getting the cafeteria, building that new, and then potentially renovating the existing music room to the kitchen area. So then, the music room could potentially be the existing office. Good spot for it, not gonna disturb anything, but at this point, good to get, if we're gonna look at this, get the cafeteria out of the gym, especially if you're looking at putting a new gym floor in there, it's a really good idea to get that out of there. With that said, then we're looking at 4K three-year-old, moving that to the elementary school, which would be an addition of four classrooms. So you'll see option one is green, option two is blue, you'll see the cost is essentially the same, because the square footage, the rooms are the same, it's just different location. There's gonna be minor tweaks with that, if you gotta move fiber or any type of utilities, obviously, but looking at the dollar amount, grand scheme of things, shouldn't fluctuate too much. So essentially, what we'd be looking at in the future is, is this something that the district is just interested in the office cafeteria, are you interested in the four classrooms, or are you interested in all of it? It came from the committee, and they were in strong agreement that looking at all of this is a good package. Looking at the new office, moving that with the cafeteria and adding the four classrooms was strongly encouraged as well, from the committee. So that would be the different options with new construction with the elementary school. So I'll move back up to the elementary, and you will see the needs that they brought up, total project cost, $4.6 million roughly, and then with contingency, fees, permits, insurance, we like to include all of this in there, so you have an accurate dollar amount, which is 25%. If you can do the math, which then is $5.8 million for what they feel is the needs. One thing I want to point out with that 25% right now, that's on everything, like I mentioned earlier, for example, the architectural and engineering services, that fee is on top of everything right now. So when that scope gets more narrowed down, that's when we start pulling that out of what the district needs an architect and an engineer for, and what they don't. So we'll update this as we move along. Alternate projects to consider for the elementary school, drinking fountains, and some of the things that were brought up, the reason why is, maybe some of these could be done with budget dollars, maybe some of these could be done other means, for example, like the gym scoreboard, is there a donation or somebody that would maybe want to sponsor that to put the scoreboard in there, but those were some of the reasons why some of these were brought up. But there's some existing drinking fountains in the elementary school that are well past their age and should be updated. Gym scoreboard currently not working. The new elementary office, that would be the different package of just looking at the office moving and not looking at the classrooms. The electronic signage, the marquee sign, similar to what you have out here at the high school, probably not as large, but something they were looking at both the elementary school and the middle school. And then library space, which you're seeing a lot nowadays, people don't read books, so it's more of a collaboration space. Right now, we would look at moving the books to the outer edge, and then you have more collaborative classroom space, nicer furniture, you have the one-for-one technology, it's a spot where you can do small groups. But that was an item that the committee thought that the school board should have a more further detailed discussion on that item. So if you look at adding the alternates, which is about $2.9 million, the total cost with that would put you at $8.7, a little over $8.7 million for the elementary school. While I'm at the elementary school, and before I move forward, let's answer any questions that you guys may have, which again, tonight, the goal is to understand the scope, so if you don't understand the scope, please ask any questions that you may have. This is a sharp group, got her down. We'll move on to the middle school. Middle school, again, broken up with needs and alternates, bathrooms. This scope could go up to $3 million if you wanted it to, but this is looking at the bathrooms, bare... bare minimum. Let's update the fixtures and the urinals, make it more of a comfort environment to go into. But this is not updating the ADA compliance. There are some restrooms that are not ADA compliant. This is not updating partitions or things like that. This is just updating the fixtures. There's moving on steps, sidewalks, cracks, things that need to be fixed around the middle school building. Small gym, demoing that. That includes all the environmental and that also includes turning that into a green space. Exterior doors, same thing at the elementary school. There's three sets of doors by the big gym as well that are in very rough shape. Some of them even have difficult issues locking. So there's a safety concern with a lot of those as well. Condensing units. There's four condensing units right now on the roof. We'd be looking to replace those with R410. Right now, there's R22 that is in there, which is very tough to come by and very expensive. Those units are also to the end of their life, so looking at updating those four units. The elevator right now, it's way past its age. This is a big concern where if something were to malfunction, it's obsolete. So to get parts and things for that is going to be very difficult. So elevator definitely makes the list. Painting, this is just something we like to include. You've seen studies too with schools, just a little TLC helps the kids feel more comfortable in the environment, obviously helps the learning. Exterior caulking and sealing is just something that you need to do every few years, but looking at some caulking with expansion joints and some around windows and some other things needs to be looked at. While we're talking about windows, looking at replacement of most of the classrooms where you have the multi-level part of the building, we'd be looking at replacing all of those windows. There was even when I was doing a walkthrough this spring/winter, I guess you could say, a gentleman left his coffee cup right next to the window and it froze overnight. So these windows are, when you even use the window cranks, some of the pieces fall apart. So the maintenance has done amazing job to keep some of this together. Windows would be a high priority. Network wiring, just like the elementary school. Cameras, they've done a great job with the safety grant the district has in utilizing that and updating it. We just look in a couple of different areas with adding a couple of cameras just for the safety side of it that are missing right now. Parking lot needs to be recoded and crack sealed as well. Roofing over Ann Holt's gym in the fifth grade section needs to be replaced, past its 25 year life. Gym bleachers, currently one set is not working and one is, not ADA compliant. If we're looking at, there's multiple things in this gym right now, but now would be the time. What we would do is take both sets of the old bleachers out and we would just put one new set on the one side that would seat 800 is what we'd be looking at. So then in the future, if it was something that ever wanted to happen, you could also add bleachers on the other side. Gym flooring, that needs to be completely replaced. They say it can be sanded down one more time. While we're doing these updates, now would be the time to update the gym floor. Locker room, the showers are currently not ADA compliant. Just did some stuff in there, it looks great. HVAC and everything, we just look at a little bit of paint, updating the benches and then just get the locker rooms to compliant. Scoreboard would be needed at the gym. There's also, it was brought up, there's small tile squares that go about 10 feet high all the way around the gym. They are pretty rough shape, but it was recommended to take those off and then paint the gym. And so that's what that cost would be. Flooring. There's a lot of nine-by-nine tile in the middle school, nine-by-nine tile, most often 99, probably 0.9% of the time is asbestos. So one concern that we have there is when you're looking at the tile, when it gets into rough shape, there's there's a safety concern there. But we would be looking at a lot of the floors in the middle school to be replaced. Interior lighting, current fixtures are adequate, but everything's kind of going to that LED, more efficient for the school. Digital controls, right now, they do have existing digital controls, but it's not open protocol. So what that means is essentially the billiards and ground staff doesn't have full capabilities of making changes to their system. Sometimes they're stuck with the maintenance provider that has to help them and assist them with that, which obviously comes with a cost each time you're doing that. Elementary school just recently updated that through an energy exemption. We'd be looking at doing that at the middle school, in the high school, which essentially is just updating the head-end system, which gives the district open protocol where they can make their own changes and tweaks to the control system. There is two air handlers that are way past their expected life up above the gym in a mezzanine. We'd be looking to update those two gym air handlers and adding a VFD, variable frequency drive as well for efficiencies. Looking at the kitchen, the district should invest in a walk-in freezer and then also look at better ventilation with the kitchen area. Library space, just like the elementary school, what we'd be looking there is to put more relaxing seating where you could do small classrooms, group work and open that up and put the books more to the walls. So you keep your main priority books that kids are actually reading and then the ones maybe in the middle, find a new location for them. Secure entrance is another one here with the middle school. So I will scroll down here first, but that is your next larger map that I printed off for you so you can see that. So currently for the people in the crowd, this is where the existing office is, but you can see with the entrance there, right now, they get buzzed into those doors and three hours out of the day, you probably have 100 kiddos sitting there that if there was a threat or anything like that, that could be a big safety concern. But again, all these buildings are safe. I do want to point that out. You have to get buzzed into this building. All the doors are locked, so I want to make that very clear that these buildings are safe. Looking at to make sure that the visitors come through the offices, we have two different options here. One would be where the existing gym that's going to be demolished, we could look at moving the office to that backspace. There's a corridor back there. We'd have to rearrange the parking, obviously with that, which gets difficult because there's not much room to grow or move with that. So looking at that, I'll go down to the next map. But we would move the staff parking lot to across the street. And you guys, I didn't print one off, but it's up there on the screen. But you will see the difficult part with this is you got your playground and you have a basketball court that's right there. So if you did put your new office back there, more than likely, there's going to be leftover gym space from the existing gym. We would look at probably relocating that playground and those basketball hoops and open that parking lot up so it's safer. Right now, you'd come in from Elm Street. Right now, those arrows show to loop and go back around, but we'd recommend probably having a paved road go along the college street that goes back out to Elm Street. So you have an enter and an exit and it would just be safe. But again, I don't want to get into the weeds. Essentially, just want to let you know that as part of that option, if you move the office, we're going to look at parking as well and pickup with parents. Option two, back to the map, will be the blue area. There's currently a classroom that's right there that we could renovate. The classroom is used for after-school activities, so with the existing office, they'd be able to utilize that space to do that. And we'd add a secure vestibule, move everything over to that corner. It would take up some of the space in between that commons area between Ann Holt's gym and where that new commons area is. But everything would be moved over there, so when school hours are in session, they would have to get buzzed in and go through the office before they came through the building. But those are what the two options that the committee decided on to review. So slide back up to the middle school. And looking at alternates, the only thing at the middle school that made an alternate was the exterior sign, the marquee sign. So when you look at the needs, you're at about 7.8 million. You're looking at roughly 52,000 for a sign. When you do the total cost with alternates, you're looking a little over 7.8 million. While I'm going through the middle school, is there any questions? Awesome. Moving on to the high school, the easier one. High school, again, you still have to be buzzed in. This would be something though where we would look, a good portion of this too is where you get a lot of parents and stuff, they're coming and they're just dropping something off. This prevents that where they come to the office. Let's say they forgot a baseball glove or a softball bat. They come to the office, they drop it off, there's no need to be entering into the building. So looking at the high school, you get buzzed in on the exterior. We would look at locking those interior doors and potentially either putting a window where the high school office is, so there's no need for them to enter the building and you can just slide that window, open it up if they need to drop something off. Or you could look at a bigger picture and have a door where they actually have to come through the office and then you'd have to reconfigure things. So that $45,000 right now, that is reconfiguring and putting a door. So that cost can really come down. For example, if you just like to put the locks on the interior doors and then put a window. Interior lighting, we would not be looking to update everything to LED here, but we would definitely be looking at updating your security lights to LED, which are the ones that are left on 24/7, just for efficiency purposes, it makes sense. Looking at the gym here, there's audio and scoreboard in the gym that needs to be upgraded. Cameras, just looking to add some cameras to the north parking lot for safety concerns. Parking lot, same as the other two buildings, sealed and crack filled where needed. Boilers, district should replace the existing boilers. There is three or two thermal solutions that we'd be looking at updating. Water heaters as well, both looking at domestic and for the kitchen should be replaced. Pumps, the district should update the pumps in the boiler room, which is for the boilers. And then there's also geothermal pumps that are on the south end of the building, that are two of them that we would look at replacing as well. There's energy recovery units that are up in the mezzanine by the maintenance room, but currently right now, we would look at updating the fans. They're just, right now, just engineered where there's been several maintenance costs to the district to replace these. So we'd be looking at just moving the fans actually up into the ductwork, which will help save maintenance costs for the district in the future. Controls, just like the middle school, we look at updating the head-end system with the controls here. So then it's open protocol, open protocol, and then your billiards and ground staff has full capabilities of making any tweaks or changes. Exterior lighting, we would also look at updating to LED as well. Again, there could be some contingency dollars from the energy exemption projects this summer, elementary school, and then the high school would be priority too. So that number could most certainly come down depending on what's left for contingency dollars. So when you look at the high school, you'll see that with everything included, 753,750 dollars for the needs. And then here's the alternates that they would like you to consider. Adding a generator here to the high school. The gym, there's indoor, the motors that drive the basketball backboards and screen presentations should be looked at updated. Choir room, this room. Projection upgrades, also an audio. Again, for example, like this room wasn't set up to host board meetings, so there's reasons why they're looking at some of that stuff. Commons, same thing. The audio and the video projection to be updated. Athletic field, look to turf. So take out the grass and put in turf. You will see there is a cost of 1.2 million. That right now is a variable where it could be anywhere from 700,000 to a little over 2 million. It really depends on that existing field and how it's prepped. Looking at drainage, looking at soils in those existing conditions. So if this is an avenue in the future that we decide to go down, I would highly recommend that we start looking at getting some soil samples and other things like that so we we know a more accurate cost. Also with the athletic field, you'll see as an alternate, but including the scoreboard and the digital signage, just some upgrades, updates that need to be done. Looking at wireless upgrades and press box connectivity, if you see a lot of things now with athletics, it's all online and with the wifi, so all of that and surveillance cameras out there would be looked at with the athletic field. So when you look at a total project cost with the alternates of 2.2 million, that'll put you at a little over 2.9 million for the high school. So real quick, I'm going to go down here to the options, which will be on your last page. You look at option one is the 14.4 million will give you your maintenance needs for all three buildings. 19.6 million will give you the maintenance needs plus your alternates. And then 35 million, which we haven't discussed, but it was brought up from your committee to look at potentially bringing the middle school over here to the high school. That would bring you to your 37 million, or 35 million, I'm sorry. A little over 35 million. So real briefly, that was your summary of the committee of all the maintenance needs to you guys. It's a lot of information. The goal of tonight though is so you guys understand what the scope is that I'm talking about. So if you guys don't have any questions with anything dealing with the scope, but then looking at our next steps, our next meetings, that's where we really get into the weeds and narrowing things down. So I would look at potentially in two weeks when you guys come, I think a good starting point for two weeks from now would be is looking at those maintenance needs. Looking at what the committee put as priority and then alternates. So really looking at those alternates and would you move those to needs? Obviously, there's going to be some of the bigger ticket items like the offices and the turf football field, things like that. Remember, those would probably go in that community survey and that community survey will help lead us down the avenue that we need to go. So some of those big ticket items, it's good to have your thoughts and prepared for that, but we're really looking for those maintenance needs right now. So two weeks from now, if you guys could have your thoughts when we come, that would be very helpful. Any questions? Awesome.
Thank you for all the information.
I appreciate your time. Thank you.
And I'd like to just, there are a couple of committee members that were here and all the time and information that you shared and invested in this process. If there's anything else that you'd like to add, I'd like to give you an opportunity now to come up to the mic if there's anything that you wanted to talk to or speak to the process or any other points that you'd like to make. Thank you. No pressure, but if you'd like that opportunity. We really appreciate the work that this committee has done over the last few months and it's been an investment of time and energy and we very much as a board appreciate that work. And thank you, Luke, for all of your work as well. Okay. Do we need? We don't need to do anything on the SDS. It's all next board meeting.
Correct.
Just come prepared for that.
Yes.
Okay. All right, we'll be moving on to item C, high school football field water meter.
I can take that one. Dr. Eslin and I have been made aware of a situation with the football field water meter along with the concession stand water meter, primarily the fact that it hasn't been red in several years. We have somebody from the city here tonight to probably go into a little bit more detail and explain it. So I'll have Gary come to the mic and he can go over that, or I'm sorry.
I'm talking Bill Marks.
Bill, okay, yes, to come up and discuss what exactly happened and the impact that it has on the district.
Thank you. Come on, Bill, you can talk. He's better at talking than me. I'm Bill Marks with the city and Gary Johnson. So what happened is when... So what happened is when school was under construction, the, all the utility accounts were taken out by Mark and Johnson. When the schools completed, two of the meters, the, um, concession stand and the irrigation system were never transferred to the school. So they essentially haven't been read in 10 years. So, um, we discovered the issue because of what you were just talking about, the potential for, uh, putting artificial turf on the field, because Ryan came to us, is what's it cost us to water the field? And that's when we discovered we didn't really know. So over that period of time, um, there's been about 40 million gallons. And what we, what we do with our water, we bill by the unit, which is 1,000 gallons. So what we did is take the meter reading, divide it by 10, and we figured that, um, it's about 19 units of water a day is what the, the field uses, um, over historically. Then since we've been reading the meters, what we're seeing right now in the, on the field is at least 50 units of water a day, which would, will cost you going forward here about 125 bucks a day. So our utility is regulated by the Public Service Commission, and we have the ability to back bill for a period of two years if there's, we discover an error in billing, um, either way. If the error would have been on the school side, we'd have to reimburse the school for a seven-year period, but for us, we're only permitted to back bill for two years. So that's what we're proposing to do. So given that, we, we feel we were real conservative on that estimate of 19 units a day, based on your usage, usage now, so it would be about three times more in dollars if we based our bill on what you're actually using, using today. So what we're at with the irrigation bill for the, the two-year period is 22,038 dollars in the usage and the meter charge and the public fire protection fee. And for the concession, it's a lot smaller, obviously. That total for a two-year period is 1,360 dollars. So we were asked, again, to come and answer any questions you may have, and, um... That's, so if there are other questions, we certainly would like to answer them.
This is the first I've heard of these numbers. Is there something written down that you've turned into the school?
Yeah.
Yep. It was, they were emailed late last, or, yeah.
It was last.
Last week that, um, we asked them to put some estimates together for, for the costing.
Thank you.
So you're talking units, that's 1,000 gallons, you said?
Yeah.
So you're looking at, we're using 19,000 gallons a day?
No, that's, that's what we're, assumption is over the average of the life of the meter. You're actually, right now, since we've been looking at the meter, using 51,000 gallons a day.
51,000 gallons a day.
So...
About 125 dollars a day in water.
What Mr. Predney's indicated is that, uh, the watering season has historically run from somewhere near around the end of the month of April through October. So, um, so that, that figure that the gentleman from the city are sharing would be for, uh, you know, multiple month block of time, uh, watering five days a week, at least.
And that's, and Shannon has that detail in the spreadsheet, how we arrived at that with the number of days per year and so on.
And one thing, and correct me if I'm wrong, what we discussed in our meeting was that this payback can be, uh, spread out over a two-year period, correct? So it doesn't have to be next month, the month after that, it can be spread out over two years.
And keep in mind, too, the PSC requires us to back bill for two years. We're not asking for two years back. They require us to do that.
Okay.
And right now, so you guys have an idea, in 19 days, you have used 2,500 dollars' worth of water. In the last 19 days, we feel we're being very fair by, by averaging the 10 years over the life of the meter compared to going forward with what you're using right now. That's the fairest way we felt we could do it, was to just take the average of what it would have been through the 10 years.
Would it be accurate to say that we got eight years for free?
Yes.
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 One way of looking at it.
Would this have been found if we hadn't?
Probably not. Eventually, we'd had to find it because, how many years?
Every 10 years, the meters have to be tested.
Right.
For accuracy.
Are we to the point where that meter needs to be tested right now before we move forward? Whose meter is it? Does it belong to us or does it belong to you?
It belongs to you. No, it belongs to us.
It's us.
It's not a, it's not a subtracting meter, so it belongs to us.
Is it, is it possible we can get the meter replaced so we can get accurate readings? Because we're, we're like...
We have another one at our shop.
Okay. What I'm, what I'm saying is, the numbers you're throwing out are based on an old meter that should be replaced anyhow, right?
No.
Not necessarily. We just have to test them.
We have meters that are in service for 50 years, that test fine. It's just a matter, you test accuracy over 10 years.
So should we do that before?
It's accurate.
Do you think we should be doing that at this point before we move forward?
Um, we can, but there's nothing else we can do. I mean, the worst that could change, I guess I don't know what could change on it. There's that many million gallons filled through it, or had gone through it.
That's what I'm saying, is that, you know, if you're gonna be testing them every 10 years, we should, we're at the end of its life, which we tested before we start looking at these hard numbers, because we're looking at hard numbers from the past, because the same numbers are gonna move into the future. So it'd be really nice if we knew that we were dealing with a meter that's actually working accurately.
But what we've done is, we're not, we don't feel it's fair to you to go forward with the, the 51 units a day we're measuring now. So that's why we, we took the entire life of the meter, and that drops it to 19 units? Because we don't, you know, we don't have the record from years past to show what it actually was. So it seems like it's more conservative for us to do it that way than to assume going forward. You know, you'll be seeing the bills, bills will be out when?
I think, or two weeks, so.
Two weeks, so that'll be for the first 19 days on, on the meters that are in there.
And you'll be billed going forward monthly on those two meters that cannot be tested, probably it's been found. And then this back bill, you have a period of two years to pay back.
And so if, my question is, if that's not accurate, then you're, are we just gonna stay with the numbers we have, or are you going to?
That's the best estimate we can make.
Okay, okay. And then if it isn't accurate, then you'll just put a new one in there? Is that what?
Correct. And if it's inaccurate in your favor, you guys would find out. If it's inaccurate, how do I say it, in our favor, there probably isn't anything we can do, because we didn't have a reading of when, when it started each, each year.
Okay.
When it ended, and if he was overriding the system to put more water on because it was dry.
Okay.
Which he's doing now.
Okay.
Because it's been so dry.
Okay.
All right, do we have general consensus to move this forward to the next regular board meeting?
Yes.
Yes.
Which will allow for more discussion at that meeting, though.
I, I believe that we need to go into closed session to discuss this. This is a negotiation issue that we need to discuss it amongst ourselves before we move forward.
Put that on the next meeting, and discuss the issues, yeah?
All right.
So that's what I'm asking, I'm asking...
You're asking for a closed session to discuss this?
I'm asking to go on the agenda for the next meeting into closed session.
Okay. And you will still get billed for the current water usage, and that's not going to change it, just they prolong the back pay.
Yeah, so from my perspective, this is twofold, so you have to think about now, we'll have to be back paying those two years, um, two years' worth, and we'll probably spread them out over two years. But then going forward, obviously, our budget has been altered for 19, 20 significantly because of those amounts that we weren't aware of. So there's gonna be some adjustments going on within that 19, 20 budget to accommodate the new amounts.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you so much for giving information to us. All right, we'll be moving on to item D, Kids Hope USA continuation and expansion, and Mr. Hopkey's going to present on this.
All right, good evening, uh, board, visitors. I'm hoping we can talk about something a little more, uh, light. So just to, uh, go over some information that, uh, we reviewed back in Ju-, or back in May with, uh, some of the, um, some board members, uh, Kids Hope leadership as well as, uh, some admin team. Um, just taking a look at some of the information we had, we had a number of mentors that were involved in the program this year, as well as a number of, uh, students. We actually increased, uh, I think it almost doubled from the previous year. So it was, it was a good showing of members, or mentors, rather, as well as students. What we took a look at is a number of different data points, one being attendance. With, with these students being involved in the, in the program, we saw really good attendance, or continued attendance and no real drop-off, which was a nice... Yes, sir?
Can I ask that we turn the screen up? We shouldn't be seeing those names.
Roger that.
Thank you.
All right. So I'm just gonna go down, just so I have a, a reference. The next, the next item that we saw on the slide deck was, uh, in reference to behavior. And, and one thing that we did see with the behavior data, I know it's kind of, um, kinda looks like a DNA chart, almost, uh, but one, one thing that was kind of interesting, one of our students had, uh, significant behaviors at the beginning of the year and then at the end. And what it correlated with was the start time and the end time of when he was meeting with mentors. So saying that, that their mentorship, um, program isn't working, I think, is, is false. I, I think it is truly providing a, a, a true benefit for those students that are struggling in school and, and have some adverse environments outside of the school district, so... The next item, uh, we took a look at, um, was some of the academic, um, academic data. The first one being our, our reading data, and what we saw overall was a continued increase in performance on the STAR test, which is, is a good indicator that those students are engaging in, uh, learning while they're at, uh, while they're in the building. Next one was talking about the, um, or was the reading as well? Yep, I've gotta continue on, sorry. Okay. And then taking a look at the math data, um, is very much repeating the same thing as the reading, showing some positive growth with our students. With our last item, it's just the overall grades. Had some fluctuation here and there, but overall, showing positive growth with our students. So I think with all of those indicators, it, it's, it's truly showing that, that the mentorship program has had a, a positive benefit for our students that are involved, as well as that, building that connection, uh, with the mentors and that connectivity with the school district period, so... So I, I guess, taking a look at that and, and the information that we have, it would be my recommendation that we would continue with this program. I just think it's a, a true benefit for those students that are involved. Any questions?
When you say continuation and expansion, is there an expansion going on here?
I, I know that there's, there's some consideration for expansion into the middle school to, uh, expand that reach to the older grades and, and really try to build that connection there as well. And I know that's, uh, something that's of consideration as we move forward, so...
Is that what we're being asked to do right now? Is that the expansion? Are we being asked to do that?
No, you're, you're just receiving information at this point. In that information, there is some, uh, uh, there's a, a handout on the, the middle school program as well. Uh, no action taken tonight, just receiving information on this.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hopkey.
And it's hard to say, I mean, see, especially if you can't see the graphs that you created, which are very good, but, I mean, it's showing that these students have improved and done well, behaviorally, academically, and math, and reading, and it's hard to know what they may have looked like, or this data may have looked, had they not had this mentorship program impacting their life. But you see growth, and that's what we wanna see in our students.
And, and that's exactly right, and, and that's why I've seen that, that one student in particular, I mean, it was, it was very telling, when it started and when it ended, so it was a benefit, for sure.
Thank you.
All right, thanks.
All right, we'll be moving on to item E, student handbook update recommendations.
So, uh, the, the three principals have conducted a review of the handbook with, uh, with their staff prior to the end of the school year. Uh, they've brought forward the, the recommendations that are in board docs, so what you'll see with that format is what the, uh, what section the item comes from, current handbook language, what the proposed update is, and a little bit of background information on that. And I'm, I'm wondering with the three principals on hand, if there are some specific questions targeted to specific handbooks that you, uh, you may wanna ask the principals to elaborate on at this time.
I just have one question, Mr. Hopkey. Um, on your, with your bus use and release procedures, um, you look, it looks at, you're gonna show them that it's strictly prohibited. How are, how are you gonna monitor that? I know it's been a problem in the past.
It, it has, and we've really been proactive in keeping, uh, staff members out there and making sure that parents aren't trying to get on the bus. I know we had five or six times where parents were trying to actually get on the bus to physically take kids off, like, timeout. We need to have a different process here, so definitely monitoring it, but making sure that that language is in there to support it, so...
Okay, great, thank you.
Thanks.
Are there any other questions? So if we have consensus, we'll move this forward to the regular board meeting as a first reading. Do we have general consensus?
Yes.
Yes. Okay. Thank you. Thank you, administrators. We'll be moving on to item F, the AGR second semester update.
All right, back again. Uh, so good evening, board and, and visitors. I just wanna loop back to a discussion we had in May regarding the achievement gap reduction report and provide some additional information for clarity for the presentation that was provided at that time. Uh, we reviewed the elementary school data, uh, for the AGR report that's shared with DPI, and there were some questions regarding some of the data that I showed. Uh, this should provide some of that clarity as we move in. So taking a look at it, we started with kindergarten. Just a reminder, this was the first year that Fast Bridge Assessment was used, um, and administered to all kindergarten and first grade students. For this assessment, it grouped students into three different categories. Green is the low-risk group and indicates that these students are performing at a level in which no reading concerns are anticipated. The yellow is some-risk group and indicates that these students are performing at a level in which, uh, there are some concerns but can easily achieve at grade level with a little assistance. And then the red is a high-risk group, indicates that these students are performing at a level in which, uh, there are some concerns but can easily achieve at grade level with And then the red is a high-risk group, indicates that these students are performing at a level in which there are concerns regarding early reading skills and anticipated reading proficiency. So what we had is teachers weren't familiar with the test and were unsure what knowledge would be assessed. What we found over the course of the year surprised us. After the spring assessment results were received, the team began to dig deeper into the data and determine what needs to be changed. For the kindergarten early reading, there was a focus on fluency for the assessment, which wasn't necessarily one of our main focuses with instruction. Yet the team did see great gains in rhyming, which was not part of the composite score, but it was a main focus of our instruction. As for the early math composite, the kindergarten team saw some movement of students from the high-risk to some-risk category, as well as a significant number of students in the low-risk category. So I think overall, we were really pleased with the results that we had here. Moving on to first grade. For the first grade team, they had a similar experience to the kindergarten team with the early reading composites from that fall-to-winter timeframe, but was able to demonstrate some growth from winter to spring, as indicated with the reduction of number of students in the high-risk category. Still, there was a greater focus on reading fluency for this assessment, which is an area we're definitely gonna be focusing more on in the future. Now, with the first grade math, this is just a reminder, first grade is the first time that students actually participate in the STAR assessments. This graph is data based on the STAR assessment. The group of students we focused on for the data analysis and growth were students who were below the national 50 percentile, so basically below that average, which that's the half of the students of the nation norm would expect to score. So each of the colored bars represents segments of students. Red being the 10%, the lowest 10% of students. The second is the yellow, which is 10 to 24% of the students. Blue is 25 to 49, which makes that average score. Teal is 50 to 74, which is above, and then green is 75 to 89. So students identified in the fall were monitored over the course of the year. As seen here, a number of students moved from that lower 50% to above the national average, which we saw in the teal and the green. So now, moving on to second grade. So as previously stated, we were only focusing on students who had scores below the national average or that 50 percentile for the STAR assessment in grades two through four for this data analysis. For the second grade reading, we saw movement of students in the lowest two categories to the next levels and saw a large number of students move to that 50 to 74 percent range, which is just above that national average. As for the math, we also saw some good results in student performance. As three students started the year below that national average and then moved to the actual top 10 percentile, which is that pink, which I think is an outstanding growth right there. All right, moving on to third grade. For the third grade reading, there were quite a few students who were in that bottom 10% according to the start at the beginning of the year. However, we did see some good growth in student performance. And students, two students actually moved to above that 75th percent, which is considered proficient, as correlated with the state forward exam. Still, we have a number of students in the lowest categories in the spring, which is something that we really don't want or really wouldn't want. For third grade math, we saw some growth for five students moving above that national average. Yet there's still some concerns with the lowest categories, where there's still limited growth and movement. And then on to fourth grade. For the fourth grade scores, we saw a consistent reduction in the number of students in that lowest category. In the spring, a number of students moved from the two lowest categories to just below that national average, as well as some moving above that average. And finally, the fourth grade math. We did see that movement of students to above the national average, 10 students, with four of them moving to that proficient level, which is that green bar. Yet there are some concern with that lowest performing, the lowest performing students in the bottom 10%, which saw limited movement as well. Any questions? All right.
What's some of your concerns with the math, the students who are performing at a lower rate? With the students who are performing at a lower rate than you would expect with the math? You talked about those concerns. Have you looked at specifically areas in the curriculum that might be?
That's, we've taken a look at some of the areas, the curriculum, as well as the interventions. And I know we've got two things that are on board for this coming year, which is onboarding of new curriculum, the universal curriculum, as well as onboarding of new math interventions too, to help with students that are performing or underperforming. Any other questions?
Going back to the kindergarten?
Yes, ma'am.
You mentioned fluency was one area that you didn't expect to be so strong in the result, or to be assessed at such a rate.
Yeah, it kinda surprised the teachers as well as the instructional coach.
Were there any other areas that stood out?
It was mainly with the fluency, the nonsense words building into that, as well as the other areas, the sight words and that part of that fluency. Because the sight words that were assessed weren't part of any specific word grouping. It wasn't Dolch words, it wasn't Fry words, it was just kinda all over the place. And I thought the complexity was more than what they were expecting as well, so. You're welcome.
When we hear, we've talked in the past about the closing the gap.
Yes, sir.
You've given us three different samples throughout the school year that you've done this. Which one is the state using when they score us? I mean, they don't get to use all three of them. Is there like once a year that we do this?
Yes.
This is the final number?
So with the state, what they use is the forward exam, and they don't use the STAR data as far as rating us. What they're looking at is, are we really closing the gap overall? And just monitoring how we're performing?
So looking forward and using their scale, they use a different scale, obviously, you're saying. How are we looking on that, do you feel? Because I mean, I can look at these from the fall, winter, spring, and I'm saying, this is really looking nice.
Yeah.
The final report that we get from the state later on is that can reflect what you're showing us here, I think?
Well, I think there's a couple of different things. With the STAR data, we took a look at altering, you know, what is proficient on the STAR test based on the forward. So that's where we're trying to gauge ourselves according to the forward test. As far as that academic growth across the year and that achievement gap reduction, what we're really trying to look at is how are we monitoring our data? How are we looking at our interventions and building into that curriculum overall? So, yeah.
So we hope that there would be a correlation between the STAR exam, which we just use for progress monitoring, as Mr. Hopkey said, that's not what the state uses, but see growth on the forward exam as we have over time with the STAR exam. But what we know is with the gaps that exist for students that are of low socioeconomic status or students that have disability status assigned to them, that gap has remained consistent, that those students are not learning at the same rate as their peers.
Mr. Hopkey, I know you said with kindergarten that teachers were surprised that there was little questioning of rhyming words. Is that correct?
Yes.
Were there other surprises to other grade levels as to what was being asked or assessed on this Fast Bridge? Because this is the first year this has been used, correct?
Yeah, that's correct.
Where PALS was used in the past?
It was. That's correct.
So are they finding other surprises, I guess, or maybe areas that are being missed in accordance with the Fast Bridge?
It pretty much was the same. It was revolving around that fluency and the nonsense word building.
Okay.
So.
Just at that kindergarten level?
Kindergarten and first grade saw it, but not to the extent that kindergarten saw it.
Okay, other grade levels finding, I guess, surprises?
So it's just kindergarten and first grade that have the Fast Bridge data, so.
Okay, yes, sorry.
That's right.
Does this data get reported to the state at all? I mean, I know that we have to have, we have to have this presentation for the board, and that's how we monitor, but, because it scares me a little bit. And I understand, I feel like we need to use data and information on student achievement as a tool to inform how we move forward as a district, not as evaluating our staff and how we did this year. So there's a different process for evaluating our staff, and this is supposed to be helping us in our decision-making with purchasing curriculum, math, English, language arts, those sort of things that we as a board decide. The fear that I have is when we put, if we change a test, and now at the end of the year, we say, well, we didn't realize they'd be testing on these things, now we have to go back and change our curriculum to teach to the test so that we're successful on a test that in kindergarten isn't going to necessarily determine, especially in these younger grades, I feel like we risk stealing the joy, the excitement, the love of learning that teachers have the freedom to instill in young people that is so important for the rest of their career. And I hope that we as a board weigh all of that and as a district with how we use this data to help us make decisions on how to best provide our staff with the tools that they need to educate our kids at a high level.
Check. Even though we're reporting this stuff, the main emphasis is here is, how are we monitoring the growth of our students? And what are we doing, you know, what are we doing to make those changes? And that is truly it.
Can you tell me why we switched to Fast Bridge?
I'll be honest, I'm not exactly sure when the decision came up, what the rationale was behind it. But I can tell you with my experience with PALS, it wasn't a great indicator as far as that screener. And I know by law, we have to have a universal screener for early literacy for grades K through two, or grade K through one, so.
Fast Bridge, is it computer-based testing? Is that correct?
It is, but it's administered individually with the teacher.
Teacher, student, and teachers entering data?
That's correct.
Where PALS is a little more cumbersome, paper?
It is, it is.
Maybe a slower process. That was kinda my thinking, what Aaron chimed in with is, then what do teachers take from this, especially at that kindergarten level? Are they now reassessing as what they'll be teaching, eliminating some of that rhyming, gearing towards the test, or?
That's the hard one. It's, you know, it's an assessment. It helps us assess what we're teaching. And you don't necessarily want to teach to the test. But it's definitely made us assess what instruction we're providing and what our focus is going to be here, so, absolutely.
I think that this data is particularly valuable as we look to launch into the professional learning community approach, where teams of teachers are really able to drill down on individual student learning. And our intent with this would be that more students are learning at a higher and deeper level more of the time. So as Mrs. Birch indicated, you know, this is important data and we need to use it to inform instruction. We certainly don't want to base the school experience on test results or things of that nature. It's just one more set of data to consider as we look at the learning experiences that we provide to students here in the Spooner Schools.
One other question I'm just having, and maybe I'm just speaking out of turn, but I would be interested in maybe your report on what teachers reported as if they felt like this was a good assessment and they were happy with how the process went, using the Fast Bridge and?
Yeah, I would say that with the Fast Bridge, one complaint that they have is it is, it's time-consuming, because you're doing each student individually. But you're really getting a good read of what that student's capabilities are. And in essence, it's a combination of two tests that we were doing before. We were doing a Fontis-Pennell assessment to get reading levels with students, as well as the PALS. Now with the Fast Bridge, they're getting that same information as far as the Fontis-Pennell was providing, as well as information that they had with the PALS. So overall, it's better in that sense, but yeah, it's still time-consuming. And then getting different data than who we were anticipating, so. All right.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you very much. All right, we'll be moving on to item G, Tech PD Try One. I think that's Mr. Miller?
Okay, so for tonight, Mrs. Feesel and myself are here to provide you with a proposal for some technology professional development training that we'd like to consider for the coming school year. And essentially, it boils down to is we've always done technology professional development or training of our staff and instructional technology. And we've tried to have a goal of providing options that are flexible and meaningful to deliver that training for the purpose of improving instruction. And over the years, it's varied from half and all-day trainings of staff to shorter trainings that might have been after hours, depending on what was available during a particular school year. And with that kind of framework in mind, our challenge, as we see it as come, is that, one, time is at a premium for professional development in this district for everything, not just technology professional development. And when we look at trying to provide it in those large blocks of time in a form of a PD day, we don't or aren't able to provide meaningful development to all our staff because of a sort of one-size-fits-all in larger groups. So with that in mind, we are aware of our past experiences, and Mrs. Feesel and myself became aware of what some other districts were doing and shared that kinda gave us this approach that we want to present tonight, that would be a one-year trial plan, if you decide to pursue it, for delivering Tech PD in the course of the next school year here, so.
So as Hugh mentioned, we've talked to a couple of other school districts. I was at CISA for the day and heard a presentation from members of the Pulaski School District. And this is modeled a little bit after what they are doing and finding success with. For them, they've been doing it for a few years now and tweaking it as they go along. So this was just kind of our starting point. Our plan would be to offer one- to two-hour training sessions, depending on the content that's being covered. So certain topics lend themselves to needing a little bit more time. Those would be the longer two-hour sessions. And then offering again some one-hour sessions, just quick, kind of introductory things that we might follow up on at a later time. Again, hoping to really customize that learning to meet the needs of our staff. It might be, you know, individual members, teams of teachers, or different departments throughout the building. We feel like this would give our staff more time to learn and then go back and practice and master those skills, and then maybe return again for some sessions in the future around that same topic, so.
So obviously, doing this would involve a time commitment in our staff. And so that brings up the term compensation, how we make it fair to them for making a commitment to, commit to doing these tech trainings. And what worked well for Pulaski, and just in some conversations with staff, sounded like there was interest in, is this idea that if staff were to make a commitment to do eight hours of training with us over the course of a school year, they would be compensated with an additional personal day, which would mean that if you're gonna look at providing a personal day, you'd have to maybe look at an exemption to your employee handbook to allow them to have four days instead of three, not to have more than five as a total. But that would then provide them with an incentive to attend trainings in terms of a somewhat fair compensation for the time they're putting in. If we did this, we would be taking attendance and keeping track of that. People that make that commitment, do the full eight hours, would then be asked to come back with a summary of what they've learned, how they're implementing that into their classrooms or curricular areas, and provide us with some justification of how the program is working and been beneficial to them. The last thing we're looking at doing here is, Mrs. Feesel and myself would provide the bulk of the... The last thing we're looking at doing here is Mrs. Fiesel and myself would provide the bulk of this training or whatever we deliver. But there are times where we have good staff, uh, with us that become experts in this or are good and can do a better job presenting it because of what they do in the classroom. So we may bring them in to lead or present the session, in which case we would compensate them at the district curriculum rate. So, that being said, uh, offers some of these advantages that we've kind of spoken to a little here and all.
Um, so again, that would allow, um, our tech team to deliver more ongoing professional development. Um, and again, set our staff up to be successful with those things. Um, again, in the past, we've had one full day or half of a day. And we all know that sitting in eight hours and hearing all of that information, it's a lot. It's overwhelming, um, at times. So again, this would give our staff opportunities to follow up on and then build on those skills that they're acquiring um, in shorter bits of time, um, over the course of the school year. So again, giving staff members a chance to learn and collaborate in small groups or, um, with their teaching teams. And then again, that flexibility, um, and opportunities to attend sessions that relate directly to what they're doing in the classroom or hoping to do with their students. Um, and then again, we would have that incentive for staff to participate so that ability to earn an additional personal day, um, during the school year.
So, uh, as you look at this or consider it, uh, basically commitments we would have to make as a district or the board would look at committing to is one, that exemption for the employee handbook to allow staff to obtain an extra personal day if they meet the criteria requirements. Obviously, there are going to be some costs associated with this and you had those in the memo that went to you in the packet. Uh, at this time, I cannot, I can tell you, I know there are staff that are interested, but I could not tell you if it was going to be, you know, the entire staff or a portion. It is my feeling that we will get a group of people that will commit to doing this. That cost could vary that if we said every staff wanted to do it, you know, you look at the cost of a sub would be somewhere in the ten to $12,000 range if everybody did it. If we look at maybe what I think is a little more realistic of somewhere between 10 to 20, that cost falls down considerably. The important thing to note in your consideration here, and Mrs. Grindel can speak to this a little more, is that this is something we came up with kind of sort of found in place for us at the end of the school year. It is not built into the budget anywhere in terms of a PD cost or a budget cost. So you would have to look at either coming up with the funds to do this from somewhere if you want to move ahead with this. The sub-costs that we're looking at in terms, or I'm sorry, the curriculum costs, if we bring other people in to do it, the maximum that would be, would be a thousand dollars. And I see it being less than that because again, it's myself and Mrs. Fiesel that will probably deliver the bulk of these trainings that we would do. So, uh, that basically is our presentation. Uh, just something we want you to consider if you want to move forward with it. We would start working to get things in place here to, you know, start in the fall after school has gotten, gotten underway, so.
I'll just add a few points to the presentation that, um, this probably wouldn't take place, that the costing of it um, wouldn't take place until the 2021 fiscal year because they would have to complete the year and have that PD in place. So it is something that we could look at building into the budget. I think from my point of view, we would maybe cap it the first year and say you can have 20 or 25 people that would do it, see how it goes. You know, we're constantly scrambling for hours in PD days and they just get filled up so fast. So this is a, um, very inexpensive alternative to that. Again, it's an unfunded liability. We have no idea how many of those days people would take, but we would always, um, budget on the conservative side. Uh, so my only recommendation would be that looking forward, we start out with a lower number and we cap it and then we maybe layer in. And if you decide to move forward with that and change the employee handbook, then we would maybe look at costing it out at a little bit higher rate.
I gue- I guess I'll go to the superintendent, Dr. Asland. Is this a recommendation from you to do this?
Yeah, I, so, you know, a couple of insights for you to consider. One is our, our school calendars are, uh, a lot shorter on available professional development time than the demand for that time. So I applaud, uh, Mr. Miller and Mrs. Fiesel for some out-of-the-box thinking about how we can fulfill some of those professional development needs, but do it outside of a time period where we have such a great demand. And that's those, that small handful of days that we have off during, during the year. It's critical that our staff continue to develop and grow their technology skills as a, uh, not just a tool for teaching, but as technology plays a greater and greater role in students' lives and society in general. So I, you know, I, I think this is a good course of action. I think if we, uh, gauge, uh, interest in it and then cap it as, if need be, we can do it in a fiscally responsible manner and have some really high-quality training for staff.
Do you feel that, um, is, is this something that an employee would volunteer and say, I would like to take this? Or is this more of a situation where an administrator would go to an employee and say, I think you need to take this? And then that's my question would be is are we, is it all volunteers or is this going to be a recommendation to some?
I believe it's going to be a combination of both because, uh, one of the things we'll be looking at is, you know, our staff meet and find, you know, areas that they need to improve in the curriculum. And we look maybe for technology solutions that can either enhance or help, you know, meet those goals. It might be something, we need you to do this, but we know there are staff that want to grow their abilities and expand what they do in their classrooms. You know, with doing a meaningful job of implementing technology within, not in addition to what they do in the classroom. So there are people that just want to get better at what they do. And there are some places where we need to find ways to get staff some time to learn how to do things they do with new curriculum resources we purchase. For example, have tech components to them to just learning how to do things that they can use in their classroom that are out there that we have available or can be made available. So it's a little of both.
Are there any other questions? Thank you for the presentation. Do we have general consensus to move this to the next board meeting?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you very much. Item H is social media archiving. Mr. Miller?
Okay, uh, to follow up here on a slightly different tact or train is, I want to talk a little about archiving our web and social media resources. And to kind of frame this discussion up, um, if you look at our district online content, uh, I would kind of characterize it as a mission-critical component of our communication strategy within the strategic plan. And by that, I'm referring to the content we have out there on our websites at the district and building levels and the web pages underneath them, our social media presence on Facebook, Instagram and Twitter. And finally, our live streaming for events like athletic events, public performances, these board meetings, and video content that we put out there. And this content, since we started this, and I've been here since the beginning we started this, has always been put out there with the intent that we are providing information in informative, accurate, timely manner that's done in a positive way. And so when we look at doing that with all this different content from these different platforms and different angles, I can tell you this content is being continually created, edited, sometimes deleted, in terms of what we do on a daily basis. And in addition to that, here with our recent venture over the last couple of years into social media, that content, although most of it is done by the district, is also created by our public in the form of their responses in comments to our social media posts. So when we look to manage that content, as I said, we are providing that in terms of updating information. Occasionally, we get, either make mistakes or something is inaccurate, so updating that so it's correct. And having to be ready and prepared for occasionally having to deal with content that is just inappropriate, whether it's inflammatory, hateful, um, harmful, more in the social media realm, but it's out there. It hasn't happened a lot, but it occasionally pops up when discussions can get passionate. So when we look at wanting to manage that and then having to look at how we do this and comply with Wisconsin Public Records Law. So this slide I'm throwing up here is a lot of information, but this is basically taken straight from the DOA guidelines for public records retention. Comes down to our social media and our website content needs to be archived because most of it is considered doing school business. It needs to be archived in its native format in terms of how it was created. And it needs to be archived in what was done in the past, along with what's out there live. So when you look at needing to do that, along with this idea of wanting to do a good job with what we do in a positive and proactive manner, it creates some challenges. First one is, is that our content providers, Facebook, Instagram, CMS, our website, they won't do it for us. And they won't, or they don't give us the tools to be able to do it ourselves. There's no way to download our content from Facebook, you know, to archive. We try to do it locally or internally. Um, right now, we do not delete any of our posts or the comments people put out there. We will hide them if they turn out to be, you know, inappropriate or offensive or things like that. But we cannot delete them if we want to comply with that public records component. If we try to screenshot them to kind of create a snapshot of what was out there, that's one shot in time and it creates this potential of missing information that's either deleted or reposted or modified in a way that's not accurate. It's not searchable to be able to present a timeline of how stuff was put. And it does not have the data that's called metadata that if it was ever dragged into a legal realm like court of law, that would stand up. Lastly, we cannot make it one way. In other words, with like Facebook, there's no way to keep people from putting comments out to our social media posts without deleting them or hiding them or banning somebody from doing it. So looking at a solution to do all this, going back to the idea of positive and proactive and meeting, you know, Wisconsin Public Records laws, kind of presents a two-part solution. So the first piece of this is what I want the district to look at considering is adopting an archiving solution. I've looked at several of them and the one that I would recommend is a product called Archive Social, which is basically a cloud-based service that archives our social media and website content real-time and provides the tools to go back and search that archive. So if somebody comes and makes a record request saying, I want all the discussions you had on social media about hall passes, we can go in, put those search terms in and provide that back, whether it was on our webpage, Facebook, Instagram, wherever. The, uh, other piece of this that then comes about by having that solution piece is it provides those tools because that archive is there. Now you can go back to look at deleting or modifying content that is put out there. So in other words, if we have somebody that, you know, sees a social media post and they put a comment out there saying that Mr. Miller's a real blank, blank, blank jerk that has no, that's hateful, attacking, derogatory, we can take that down and get rid of it. There's still a record of when it was there, how long it was there, that kind of thing. But to do that effectively and do it in a way that allows you to manage it, again, positively, proactively, we really want to look at having a set of guidelines in terms of what the district considers our appropriate guidelines for posting to our social media posts. We do that, we educate or let our public know what it is to produce constructive comments that, uh, question or want to know or like what we're doing with our social media or what we're talking about. It also provides them with the criteria of saying, this is how or why something might come down. So they know if somebody questions why it came down, what our decision was or our rationale behind taking that down. And finally, it provides a staff in our district that are charged kind of watching this and when we become aware of these, having some criteria to know when we should make a decision to modify or delete or manage something so we keep that proactive. We take all that together, that provides us some good reasons for having a two-part solution of one, we maintain that public records compliance. We avoid losing that records content that might be out there through our, just our daily management of business. And finally, as our social media continues to grow and that, we do it proactively, trying to maintain that positive, you know, image of deleting or modifying stuff if we need to, that doesn't match our guidelines. So for discussion or consideration, looks like I deleted something inadvertently here from the end of the slide. Uh, what I'd like the board to look at considering is the idea of adopting Archive Social. I included the cost there. It's about $4,800 a year. That's a cost that would be absorbed through the tech budget and our communications budget. Uh, the second piece of that is that we'll be looking to probably come back in August to you with a set of guidelines taken from some of the resources I provided of what those guidelines are going to look like for Spooner, for you to consider and adopt so that we could kick off the school year ready to go with our social media and web media programs in place, so. That's basically it.
Thank you, Mr. Miller. Are there any questions? All right, are we all in consensus to move this to the next regular board meeting?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Seems like a very proactive thing to be doing, so I appreciate that work. All right, we will be moving on to item I, Updates to Board Policies Regarding Committee Structure.
Okay, so a couple of pieces to update you on regarding policies that are currently board adopted uh, in relation to, uh, your recent decision to move to the committee of the whole structure as a permanent committee structure. Yeah, currently have two policies on your book that, uh, that deal with committees. One is 0155.1 titled Standing Committees and Duties. Uh, the recommendation from Neola is that you delete or rescind that policy, so that would just come out of your policy book. The second policy is 0155, School Board Committees. Now at this time, Neola is, uh, doing some research and, and working to prepare, uh, some recommended changes to that policy because if you look at it, it is, uh, pretty heavily geared towards what the previous committee structure was. So, uh, we continue to, we know that that policy does need to be updated and we stand by awaiting, um, Neola's, uh, update to us. So at this point, the, the recommendation would be that you, uh, consider a deletion or rescinding of 0155.1, Standing Committees and Duties at your regular meeting in a couple of weeks.
Thank you. Do we have general consensus to delete that policy?
Yes.
Yes. All right. We'll be moving on to item I, Food Service Policy Updates Based on Food Service Audit.
Unfortunately, tonight I don't have the update between year end. Trish and I just weren't able to connect and get it done. Um, just a little information behind it. We did, uh, we were up for an annual food service audit this year. And one of the, um, things that we did get recommended on was that we needed to enhance our negative food service balance policy. We've previously talked about this. So over the course of the next month, Trish and I will be, uh, working with the Neola policy to put some samples together for the board and probably bring it back in August. So, nothing more than tonight.
Okay, thank you. All right, item K is Consider the 2019/20 WIAA Membership.
Annually, the membership, uh, application comes before the school board for consideration. There you see, uh, in your board docs, the 2019/20 WIAA Membership Application. You see the sports that we have listed, uh, and, and of note is the change for, uh, girls soccer no longer being a co-op sport. Uh, WIAA, the past couple of years has really worked at cost control. So you'll see that as, uh, was the case for this year that just ended, our membership dues and fees are, uh, zero dollars and zero cents. So, um, you know, we appreciate the WIA's work towards that. And, uh, uh, we would look to have you approve this membership for the 2019/20 school year.
Thank you. Do we have general consensus to move that forward to the regular board meeting?
Yes.
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 All right. Moving on then to item L, Review Lead Custodian, Custodian, Media Center Aid, Instructional Support slash Specialist, Math Specialist, Reading Specialist, and Interventionist Job Descriptions.
Again, just bringing forward, um, our set for this month. And, you know, if you guys have any questions, other than that, just looking to bring them to the board.
I do, I do have one question. Um, reading through the math specialist and reading specialist, um, it references the curriculum committee and also, um, so if we could have those revised?
When these were written, that committee was still in, in place.
Actually, you, you do have a curriculum committee in policy and it, and it is, uh, the design of the committee is for curriculum review down the line. So it does exist. It would. It would be a committee that would be rallied in the future, but, you know, the past couple of years, we've just have been working to get some curriculum in writing.
Okay. Thank you for the clarification on that.
Yes.
Any other questions? Do we have general consensus to move these job descriptions forward to the regular board meeting?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Moving on to item M is the rollover of activity accounts.
Annually, per board policy, the board shall approve the carryover funds with the accounts in good standing. You guys have been provided with a list of those accounts. Remember, if it's a negative, that means that it's in good standing for the, for that activity account. You can see the recommendation for the two accounts that do have that positive balance, which one being the Oregon fundraiser, the second one being the aviation club.
Any questions?
There was no more follow-up with the Oregon?
I think we've reached the end of the, the road with the Oregon fundraiser, so my recommendation is in this audit cycle that we write off the, the re, the balance in that fund.
So that guarantee didn't quite come up to be a guarantee?
Correct.
Came pretty close.
I mean, considering where we were.
That's true.
It came very close.
It did.
Earlier in the year, there was some talk about some concerts that were going to be done, that we're going to raise some money. Where has this been in the last year, since a year ago until now? Has there been anything done in the last year on this?
I can go back and pull more of the, the detail if it has. It's been very minimal, maybe $100 here, $100 there, but I think if we leave it like that, it will be floating out there for many, many, many years.
Would there be a problem with that? Just leaving it?
That's up to the board to decide if there would be a problem with that.
I would personally like to be done with this. I think that it's been on for quite some time. Many people have invested many efforts and time to try to help this cost and I think that it snowballed into something that the previous board didn't foresee. It was unfortunate and I think that considering where the balance was and what it is now, it's come a very long way.
I agree. We've, you know, we've lesson learned from this case and we've put plans in place that that wouldn't happen again. So I agree with Erin. We've come a long way with it.
Thanks.
All right, are we in consensus to move this, these rollovers to the regular board meeting?
Yes.
Yes.
Paul?
No.
No?
No, it's, it's fine. We just, we're not voting on it. We're just recommending for later and.
Yes.
I think you have a consensus.
Okay. Thank you. We'll be moving on to item N, Discussion on Board Members Becoming Part of the Safety Team.
Sarah Hanson.
Ms. Sarah Hanson?
I guess I can save this one from here. So the idea just is that we want to include board members in and I know we kind of opened that up last year to include everybody, but, you know, with the whole, the laws and everything, not everybody can show up. And so just kind of trying to get a sense of if you guys want to be kind of part of that. So what that looks like with our meetings, we do have like kind of working meetings where there's five hours, three times during the summer where the team meets. So we're not looking for you guys to, you know, get down and do a lot of that work, but a lot of the discussions happen during the school year where we have one-hour meetings. And so I'm not necessarily looking to see, you know, who wants to be on the team and always involved in the meetings, but just kind of maybe a contact or two from the board that might be, you know, somebody I can reach out to and kind of give you the agendas of the meetings to see if there is interest so that you're more looped in to what's happening.
That's good. What do you, does it matter if you have consistency on board members that would attend?
It doesn't matter to me, but I'm just not sure how to do that exactly. So whether there's a person that I go through to make that happen, kind of looking for your advice on that too.
You've, have you had board members attend in the past? I think Deb has attended, correct?
Yep, Deb has attended one.
Yep.
This technically is not a committee created by the board, correct? So it's not like it would be posted for the public to see or is it something that would just be posted? We could just show up if we wanted to?
It's a, it's a safety team, right? So it's not, it's not like the, right, it's not like the employee handbook committee or something like that, right?
I, I would, my suggestion would be just send out an email when it occurs and see who's interested at the time, you know? I'd rather than have one person, do we want to have actual people or you want to just throw it to the board and see who wants to show up?
Well, you're, you're looking for a point person just for efficiency, consistency, that kind of thing?
Yeah. And to kind of keep track to make sure that, you know, we don't have too many board members there and just kind of that follow-up and that can be kind of cumbersome.
I'd be willing to take on that point role if that's, if that's something that we'd need if anybody, anybody else doesn't want to do it. I can certainly do it. That's not a problem.
That'd be lovely.
Thank you, Deb.
And I could be a backup if you need.
Okay, great. Thank you, Nathaniel.
Thank you. All right, and you can, okay, we're moving on to item O, Standard Response Protocol Memorandum of Understanding.
Okay, and to, to just kind of introduce this, there's just a three-minute video. They can do it a better, better job than I can. This foundation is called the I Love You Guys Foundation and it's kind of confusing, so I'll let them do their own introduction here if I can figure this out here. Press the present button. Oh, there it is. Whoops, it didn't play, Hugh. Where is the play? I don't see the play button. That's okay.
Just go straight to YouTube.
That's okay. It'll take longer. Okay, so the I Love You Guys Foundation was put together by John Michael Keys, who lost a daughter in a school shooting incident. And this was the last text he got from his daughter before she was killed. She just says, "I love you guys." So that kind of explains that foundation name. So what it is, that happened in 2008 and 2009, they came up with a foundation and it kind of started out as scholarships. But over time, obviously, the parents kind of, this was a mission that they felt was very important to work on developing standard language so across the board. So what they realized is that in any incident that you would have in your safety plans, it would revert back to just certain responses. So it'd be lockout, lockdown, evacuate, shelter, and hold. And these are, we have these in our safety plan, but we, again, use kind of different terminology. But what we're finding is that this happened in Colorado and it's spreading across the nation and now it actually is being recommended and adopted in Wisconsin as well. And so we just kind of want to jump on board with that to say that we would be one of the first ones there in Wisconsin north of Highway 8 to get on board. And, and that's kind of what we've been. I've, I've actually been able to talk to John Michael Keys a couple times and been at two of his presentations and it really is something that we need to, to get on board with. And so my ask to the board really is to, to sign the memorandum of understanding. Really, that's all they're asking. This is a no-cost thing and it's just updating our safety plan, but not only updating the safety plan, but they have all kinds of training. So this binder here is all of the stuff I was able to print of stuff that they offer free of charge. And this is before you sign the memorandum of understanding. Once you sign that, then there's a whole nother layer of training. There's all kinds of PowerPoint presentations for staff training, student training. They offer you, you know, all the flyers you can hang at all your buildings that tell students what to do, community member training. So it's just, it's a resource that's just invaluable and there's no reason not to adopt it, but we would need a signature from administration to be able to make that happen. So that's why I'm coming to you. Are there any questions about that?
I just had one. How do you see this fitting in with the Alice training that we?
Yeah, and that was one of the discussions we actually did talk directly about when I sat down with him. And that is one thing where that's not something that they, that he himself promotes, but it doesn't conflict with it because this is just drilling and training on the options that are included with Alice. So they don't compete with each other. It, it can work well. So it's just how we do our trainings. So instead of saying, you know, okay, there's an active shooter in the building, we need everybody to lock down. We don't say that. We, you know, these are the options. You can lock down or you can evacuate, you know? We, we train, we train how to do each of those options, but in that instance, it's open for any of those options.
I think just, just to speak to that a little bit, part of the discussion we've had here at the local level is, you know, our staff is really well-drilled in Alice. However, there are parts of the day where we have a lot of people in the building that aren't school people, that, that won't, won't know what Alice means or how to react. So this protocol, and I, I think particularly the graphics that it provides, provides really very understandable language and direction in the event that we'd have some kind of emergency in the building where we had people in the building, but they weren't school people that were drilled in the Alice protocol.
I like the simplicity of the words. I mean, it's pretty straightforward, easy to understand inside, outside, inside or outside of that training. I mean, lockout, lockdown, evacuate. That's, that's the easier thing for kids, I, for everybody. I like the simplicity of that one handout. I think it's good stuff, personally.
I agree.
Do we have general consensus to move this forward to the next board meeting?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you for all your work on this, Sarah. We'll move on to item P, the Health Services and Team Wellness 2018-19 Annual Report.
Sarah Hamilton, the district nurse, has provided the board with the wellness board report as long as, as well as her health annual report. I could try to answer any questions that you might have. If I can't answer them, I'll gladly take them back to her and follow up with the board if there are questions.
There was a lot of information in the report and it was very thorough. So I don't have any questions, but yes, it was very well done. Does anyone else have any questions?
I think we just look to receive and place these reports on file.
Okay. We'll receive and place these reports on file. Thank you, Mrs. Hamilton, for all the work on this. All right, we'll be moving on to item Q, 2019-20 Academic Standards.
This is part of the annual requirements for the school board and that is where you are designating the standards. So student academic standards to be used in the Spooner area school district for the 2019-20 school year in the area of mathematics. That'll be the district standards that you have recently adopted. The English Language Arts area, the district standards that were adopted a year ago. In the area of science, the next generation science standards and in social studies, Wisconsin model academic standards.
Do we have general consensus to move these forward to the next board meeting?
Yes.
Yes.
Who's pretty proud that it says our district standards? I think that's great and lots of work went into that and I'm proud to see that there. So, thank you. We'll be moving on to item R, Review Revised Northwest Iceman Hockey Agreement.
So earlier in 2019, we had spent a lot of time at this level discussing hockey and the, the future of hockey and, and hearing, you know, a variety of insights. Part of what came out of that was a board direction to go back to the member districts and district administrators to have some conversation about this agreement and look to get something more formally together because there was not a written agreement. So what you have before you is a first draft developed by the host district, by the Barron School District, and this is, this has gone out for review here, here in the district. Mr. Scherz, Mr. Lucius, and I have reviewed this. A couple of recommendations that come forward from Spooner. One would be to put a control measure in if the size of the co-op would grow too large because we know when we are in co-op sports that there cannot be cuts. So in theory, you'd have a co-op squad that would be too large to provide meaningful hockey experiences for, for students, participants. The other would be a control measure that if a member district grew to a given size, that, that the member district would be allowed to rotate out, establish a standalone squad and be in good standing. So those, those are a couple pieces of feedback coming forward and that's what we have for you at this time.
So when we bring this to the board, we would then vote on just those additions that you were talking about?
I, so I, I'm curious to hear your insights and field questions that you have. I, I think that probably the best course of action would be that we send these couple of items back to Barron for consideration. You know, the hope is that all the member districts and the co-op are having the same conversation at their board meetings. And so, you know, those, those would be a couple pieces that, that I think would, you'd do well to send back for consideration in addition to anything else that board members may have that either isn't addressed and needs to be or needs to be clarified, whatever the case may be.
No, I, I like that. Those two that you added, I think are important. Thank you.
I agree. I think that this would allow for that to be changed annually, so that could be an assumption, but to have it in the agreement is important.
I'm thrilled. I like that they have the procedure process for changes and I think that that's a very positive point for them to come to us, even though we're, we have the next year to work on this, but it's wonderful that there's something for us to work through. There's a guideline, we have guidance to work with now.
Yes. Do we have general consensus to move this forward or to go to Dr. Aslan?
Yes.
To ask for those amendments?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. Item S is 30, 60, 90-day planning cycle.
So I hate to be the, the one who brings this up, but the summer's a third of the way over. So as we start to project out, you know, we start to look at some of the beginning of the year activities, but I, you know, I just want to take a, take a minute and recognize Karen Collins and her crew. Great first session of summer school, all kinds of kids participating. And we know that we have two more sessions that'll take place over the summer. And we know that with summer school, in addition to all the professional development that we have going on over the summer, we are gathering information for what will be our inaugural edition of our district newsletter. So we know that layout work is going on with that as, as we speak and that we are preparing for that. So a couple of big pieces here in the near term.
Thank you. Does anyone else have anything to share about our planning? No? All right. We'll move on to item T, the Financial Update.
So I'll start out with the May financial statements and then I'll give a little update about year end since we ended the fiscal year yesterday. If you, you, the board was provided with the financial update for May. Beginning balance was a little over 3.9 million. We took in 165,000, a little over 165,000 in revenue. Total amount available for spending was a little over 4 million and then expended 40,000. Beginning balance was a little over 3.9 million. We took in 165,000, a little over 165,000 in revenue. Total amount available for spending was a little over 4 million, and then expenditures for the month of May were approximately 1.3 million, leaving the cash balance at the end of May at around 2.7 million. A little update for the fiscal year-end, which I mentioned was yesterday, you know, we're very early in the calculating process, but as of today, we believe we're about between 60 and $1,000, or 60 to 80,000 overspent, which is still under that 100,000 that we anticipated for the year. I asked for some flexibility on that, because we still have invoices that are out. We're estimating about 20 to 30,000 in invoices that are out. Again, there are some unanticipated revenues that could come in, but we, we don't have any worries on where we're going to end up for the year.
Thank you for that update. All right, and we'll be moving on to item U, Approval of the Vouchers. Does anybody have questions on any of them? No questions. We'll move those to the regular board meeting, and now we are going to convene into closed session. Do we need a roll call vote?
You do need to take a roll call vote, yes.
Robert Holland?
Yes.
Nathaniel Wilson?
Yes.
Kate Kenny?
Yes.
Deb Wilson?
Yes.
Erin Burden?
Yes.
Marsha Schur?
Yes.
Paul Johnson?
Yes.
We will convene into closed session.
All right. Thank you.